I want to call the meeting to order, please. And I want to do my hand to begin with the planning commissioners. Mr. Mansler?
Yes.
Mr. Brown, yes. Mr. Yelich, no. Mr. Johnson, yes. Mr. Bandersky?
Yes.
Yes. I don't know whether Mr. Yankew is coming or not.
We haven't heard from him.
Okay. And Mr. Wright?
Here.
Thank you. Stand for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Horsch, would you mind leading us in the pledge of allegiance? Allegiance, I'll get it on you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Brown? Yes, sir.
Do us a favor, just maybe put a little more emphasis into talking right into the microphone.
I forget, so thank you. No, remind.
For us watching.
Okay. Nice to see some folks, I think, from the community at the back of the room. Am I correct on that? Good, welcome. Glad you're here. Was it the draw of the master plan that called you here? You just wanted to see what the planning commissioners look like.
That's John.
Uh-oh. I was expecting that she would like to see the planning commissioners instead.
She'd be disappointed, probably.
Sure. Anyways, welcome. Glad you're here. It'll be an interesting meeting, showing the public what we've done over the last number of months to get new vision for the community. So hopefully he'll like it and he'll be welcome to give some comments as well later on this evening. And again, it's colder, I didn't mean to ignore you.
No problem.
Again, this evening is going to be the master plan discussion. Mr. Lloyd?
The agenda in the minutes.
Collectively, you'll get me on you. So with the call of the allegiance, Mr. Bandersky, you said what?
May I approve the agenda that was presented?
Do I hear a second? Or in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's few and far between what I do on the meeting, so bear with me. As I mentioned, we're going to be talking.
Approve of the minutes?
Yes, I know that. Let's go ahead and do it.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I have reviewed the meeting minutes for August 6th and October 1st. And in the final draft, find everything in order, so I make a motion first to approve the meeting minutes, August 6th, 2020.
Do I hear any comment from the audience? If not, also a vote to approve the meeting agenda for Tuesday, August 6th, 2020. During the time, signify by raising of your hand for the approval, please. Two, three, four, five, six, I think seven of us. Okay, so we're on the meeting minutes for Tuesday, August 6th of 2020, as presented.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for October 1st, 2020, as I find everything in order.
Yes, it is, all right. Glad, thank you for the good work. And again, all in favor of approving the meeting minutes for?
Mr. Jerry?
Yep, where did I forget?
I noticed that, just a little, it's a typo, no doubt, but since it mentions my name, I'll mention it. It references here that I arrived at 7:08 a.m., while I consider myself prompt.
Oh, that's very good.
I don't think I was 12 hours early. So just note that it was, it should read PM rather than AM. And thank you.
Well, here I was very excited that you were getting here that early. Because I wasn't available. Okay, back to the meeting minutes.
With that amended, I'll second the motion to approve the minutes.
All in favor of approving the meeting minutes from, let me get the right date.
October 1.
October 1, 2020. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. They're approved. Thank you. Good job, as usual, Mr. Bandersky.
Okay.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda will be public comment, as I mentioned. I see, do see three people from the community, which I'm delighted to have here and share the rest of our meetings are as well. So if any of you three would like to talk regarding, public comment regarding the township's master plan, please feel free to come up to the microphone. No one back there? All right, so we'll pause on public comment. Any other correspondence that I'm unaware of? Mr. Lloyd?
No, there's two correspondences put on the dais for the planning commissioners. There's a future land use map, color version of that with some circles. We'll get into that after the presentation from Beckett and Rader. And then there's an updated sheet that shows some additional tweaks to the redline version of the tree protection woodland ordinance.
Okay. So nothing, is there anything else? Nothing from the audience? Why don't we go ahead and begin with the master plan and hopefully that'll inspire our guests this evening?
Well, indeed, we can turn it right over to Beckett and Rader. This is Liz Gundman from Beckett and Rader. She's been working closely with Leah, who you all know and have met her. I think Liz might be new to most of us, but in any event, she's got a presentation for us and we're going to let her take it away. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Mark. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Very good.
Okay. So I'm going to share my screen to the story map. And, okay. Hang up? It's working? Great. So this, and if at any point as I'm going, if you can't hear me or if I'm going too fast, just let me know. And adjust. So this is the Grand Blank Township Master Plan Story Map that we came up with. This is an easy, easy-to-access visual format that goes through the key findings and highlights of the master plan. It's meant to be very user-friendly, so you can scroll through it like this, you know, just going up and down, or there's the sidebar that has, it's basically like a table of content that if you click on one of these buttons, it takes you to that page. So the idea here is that, once this is ready, which it basically is, that you all would get a link to it and then would distribute it as widely as possible. Then people would have a chance to read through it and then at the bottom, which I'll get to at the end, there's a link to a survey where people can offer comments. And that is the way that we would receive feedback. So it's organized in the same main categories as the master plan is, so you know, the main sections like housing or central focus areas or special focus area. And each section basically has one page of text summarizing the key recommendations and highlights, and then there's an associated image with it. So I am going to go through this relatively quickly, just to give you an idea of what it looks like, and then we'll be happy to take any questions at the end. So it starts off with, you know, what is a story map, sort of as an introduction, and then goes through some basic introductory things like what is a master plan? Then, community and planning history, talks a little bit about the history of Grand Blank Township, and then some of the planning history that you have had, highlighting the many corridor studies that you have done in the past. Then get into community engagement. This section talks about the community engagement, highlights the community survey and how we got that out. The image sort of is an example of the postcards that went out. And then it also talks about the student engagement sessions that, there was a separate survey, and then there were also five in-person engagement sessions at Grand Blank High School and the government classes. Then get into those main themes. And each theme follows kind of what is in the implementation section of the master plan that has an overarching goal, and each of those goals are reflected in the story map. So for existing land use, the goal is to provide for a mix of land use that allows for more growth and development while also preserving and increasing the natural features in the township. So in terms of existing land use, some of the highlights are that a lot of the dominant land use is residential, but there are great opportunities in terms of commercial and industrial and improved projects for future development. Next main category is natural features. In the master plan, existing land use and natural features sort of are clumped together, but here we separated them, them out for, so that there could be separate images for each section. But the main highlight for natural features was that water quality was a high priority for protection in both the community survey and the student survey results, so the section talks about the importance of that. So highlights that wetlands and tree canopy are ways to help protect that water quality. Next main section is housing. Overarching goal here is to provide a variety of high-quality housing options for all income levels and stages of life. This first section on housing talks about, you know, age of housing. Grand Blank Township is relatively new, with most housing units constructed after 1970. And then also talks about, you know, housing formats. And then associating graphics, about availability of housing types and housing formats. Then also, in the same category, neighborhoods. We analyze the township by separating, dividing it up by census tract, and then looking at neighborhood features such as tenure, vacancy, age of construction, and housing affordability, also incorporating cost of housing plus the cost of transportation. And then on this particular section, you have the map that has the different, the census tracts shown, and then there's an associated table with all the data, all the neighborhood data for each tract. Next main section is centers and focus areas. The goal here is to transform, enhance, or preserve the township's distinct centers. The township identified several main key nodes in the township and then categorized that based on the transform, enhance, or preserve system. So the map for this one shows those seven different centers and focus areas. And so the ones that are under transform are, the idea is those are areas for prime development, redevelopment, and improvement opportunities. And those two are North Grand Blank, which we call the point, and then also the Downtown Development Authority District or Tech Village Center. The enhanced areas are largely functioning as intended, though improvements and additional amenities should continue to be implemented. These are the Hollywood Center, which is number three here, Benton Hill Center, which is number four, Heritage Park Center, which is five, and Industrial Park Center, which is six on the map. And then finally, the preserve areas are ones that have historic resources that may benefit from historic preservation. And the one identified here is the Perry Settlement Area, which is number seven over here on the map. So then we go into a little bit more detail about those transform areas. So the North Grand Blank Township highlights the point and Saginaw Street and how those are key gateways into the township. The community survey had specific questions about North Grand Blank Township and how the community wants to see it developed, redeveloped. And there were, there were mixed results about what people want to see, but the survey did give guidance on, on how the community wants to, wants to see redevelopment happen. So for example, the majority of respondents wanted the style to be the more traditional development style, like in this example image on the screen. And then the second transform area is the Downtown Development Authority District, the Tech Village Center. And so this section talks about this, the township's major planned commercial center here and how it's newly governed, or it's governed by the newly developed DVA and the Downtown Development, or Downtown Development Plan and Tax Implement Financing Plan, as well as the Tech Village Master Plan and Market Study, and then the zoning ordinance updates that are associated with Tech Village. Next major section is circulation and corridors. Overall goal here is to provide a complete network of motorized and non-motorized transportation infrastructure for all users. Highlight, the big focus here is non-motorized transportation, so we highlight the many benefits of non-motorized infrastructure, existing non-motorized plans and pathways that the township has, and then also areas where that should be priority areas for expansion. And that is all shown in the map, so it's associated with this section. We also talk about how the community survey results strongly supported expanding both pathways and sidewalks. There's also a discussion on motorized transportation, highlighted here as the short highway extension and how that's an opportunity as a new gateway into the township. And then finally, opportunities for bus expansion in the township due to its proximity to Flint, and then also the MTA's already robust system that's already in place. Then we come to services, facilities, and assets. The overall goal here is to provide ample and high-quality services to township residents and visitors and to recognize and support the township's assets. Highlighted here are the Government Center, which serves as the hub of municipal operations in the township, parks and recreation opportunities, the strong education system in the township, and then the healthcare system in the township, and the regional asset of Ascension Genesis And finally, we get to future land use planning. Wait till the map loads. This is an interactive part of the story map. And it's still loading, but it has both zoning and future land use. So zoning is on the left and future land use is on the right. And then there's this bar that you can move across that shows, it's always future land use on the right and zoning on the left, but if you zoom in close, you can kind of see how different parcels of the zoning and future land use line up. The future land use categories are largely unchanged from the 2012 plan, so that should allow for continuity between the two plans since the township already uses the future land use map to guide land use and policy decisions. And then it also talks a little bit about the zoning plan, and which talks about areas of the zoning ordinance that could use some adjustment to better align with the future land use and master plan goals. So that, in summary, is the story map. And then at the end, I said before, there is this link to take the survey, and you just click this link, and then it takes you to a place where you can write comments. And I'm going to see if it'll take me there. Yes, okay. So then, are you all seeing this?
Yep. Yes.
So then, someone who's looking at it can take, go to this page and then write any comments they have on the plan. So then, the next steps, as far as I know, there is a public hearing scheduled for December 3rd, so that gives us about a month for this to be out and to receive comments. I believe that about three-quarters of the way through, the goal was to have a sort of live Q and A session that would likely be a hybrid of virtual and in-person, and then keep taking comments on the story map, and then it would proceed to the public hearing on December 3rd. So that is, that's all I have, but I'm happy to take questions or comments from anyone.
If I might, before the commission might raise any questions, what I'd want to say is, you know, what we're doing here is making a real concerted effort to find a way to engage the public as much as we possibly can. Let's face it, there's a lot of limitations in our ability to meet in person these days. And so we've had to look at and find and work with Beckett and Rader to find alternative approaches, and the story map approach is a way that's being proposed. The other idea is, and we're still intending to have some, as was mentioned, a hybrid of also looking at our ability to utilize numerous facilities, multiple facilities, and do some, you know, in-house workshops, open house, whatever you want to call it, either way, to help, you know, supplement this effort or have this effort supplement the open houses. You all who've been through a master plan before remember pretty much what you saw up here, probably, the boards and, or in the form of boards and presentation materials, and folks come through with little blue stickers and all that. And this is the high level at the end of the process where what we're doing is letting folks know, we've done this. We've accomplished this, this is what we've put together, and we want to make sure, this is our way of getting back and saying, here's what we've worked on, here's what we've accomplished, and we want to make sure that we haven't missed anything. And it gives people an opportunity to see what we boiled down from the survey work and the analysis that we performed, and how that information's being conveyed into the new master plan. And if there's areas up there that folks have, you know, I hope a great deal of interest in, you know, there'll be questions, but if there's concerns or questions, that's the other thing that we want to be able to address, is to make sure that no opportunity is lost, to give people a chance to come in and raise questions and identify issues that they may have with either the work that we've done or simply the concerns they have based on a certain area of the township or whatever the case may be. So, you know, I give my hats off to the folks at Beckett and Rader for continuing to work and trying to put together, for a minute, for a minute, to give us, have this master plan as much as we can, so to give it. And it's been in the newspaper, right, in the place, communicating, trying different ways of linking it in. It's, excuse me, in the papers, wanting that the plan could actually be pulled up and provided, based, to be, 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 to be,[1588.87]
Okay, just wanted to prove that I was paying attention.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you for your comments.
Any additional comments or questions?
Chairman Brown?
Oops, thank you, sorry. I forget to look this way.
Thank you. So I have three points I'd like to, first, regarding the online, I think this is kind of the online road story map you're giving us. Is there some way that we could incorporate the ability for people to take some kind of notes or make some kind of evaluations as they scan through the document? I mean, right now, you kind of have to read it, you gotta take some notes, and at the end, there's a survey for some feedback, unless I didn't get that right. But if there might be, if there might be some way for people to go through and just kind of hit, even, you know, if there's a comment to make or maybe say, you know, great job, or, you know, I don't know if there's a ability to do that.
I, I am not a GIS expert, so I will have to bring that back to our GIS technician to see if that's possible, but I think that's a really good idea.
Okay, the second, the second item has to do with land use, and I don't know, we had this big, we had this 11 by 17, I think, or whatever it is here. Are we going to talk about that at a different time or is it time to talk?
No, that's a different item that was raised earlier.
Okay. And then, and then the last point, Mr. Bandersky was going through this and noticing some things. What I noticed at the end is, and maybe the planning commission ought to spend a little time with this, is when we get to the implementation, there are numerous projects that were identified. And I'm just wondering if, you know, there's so much there that we've bitten off that we're, you know, maybe not going to be able to chew. And so, whether there's a way to maybe help prioritize those or kind of, just noticed that there were an awful lot of them. That's it, thank you.
Mr. Brown, if I might, absolutely, there are a lot and there are a lot of things that need to be done. And so, we do incorporate all of them into the, into the plan. And then it's really a matter, and I was going over the implementation plan a little later this evening too, but, you know, what I wanted to do is do it on a little higher level, but what I'll point out is, you know, you've got a couple of areas that are of particular interest. There are some things that the planning commission is going to really need to take the lead on. There's some recommendations in there about rezoning potentially and modifying some of the existing zoning language. Those would be the things that we would bring in from the staff level and start to have dialogue with the commission about. But what we would also do is in advance of that, as the planning commission, we would put together what we think are, let's say, the top four or five priorities out of this plan. And then what we would want to do is when the time comes, and I hope it's soon, when we get a new board on board and maybe after January, we'd get together with them and go over what the planning commission's thoughts are about it, of course, share the plan overall, but then also say, and of that, here are the things that we're looking at going after. And, you know, we may find there's budget implications associated with some of this or whatever, but what we'll do at the planning commission level is to drill down into the implementation plan, pull out, you know, maybe half a dozen or so of these things that we know we can begin to work on soon, not all of them at once, but soon, and then maybe form a committee or two here and there, and really begin to go to work. But your point's a good one about having so many, but we will use that as our long-term document of goals and objectives, if you will. And then, I mean, there you go, and we discuss things at the planning commission. We'll get together, we'll talk, and we'll, what are the things that we notice that we want to change or we need to change that would do us the most good? From, you know, what are the things that we've run into when we're looking at planning projects, for example? And about requirements for sidewalks. You know, those are the things that we'll discuss at the planning commission level and that hopefully will create an opportunity to sit down with the new board and get their support in us moving forward. Because as I said, in case there were some budgetary implications we're going to need more support, and we want to get support, I mean, personally, there's budget implications with your money.
There were four or five small kind of tweaks in here that I'll just maybe share with you after this that we make recommendation, if you want to take a look at those. Thank you.
Mr. Bandersky?
As a follow-up to Al's point, might I suggest that the commissioners take that implementation plan and review it for the priority one items and make sure that we feel it's priority one or priority twos, if we think that they might be priority ones. Each of us do that, mark it up, get it back to you, and that, because that, in my judgment, that would circumvent a lot of discussion when we come together and pick the top ones.
I will get an email out after this meeting asking the commission to do that very thing if I'm generally getting a consensus that that's a good idea. And I am and I will.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else along those lines that we've been discussing?
One more time, if not, we're going to go down to public comment, I know I asked earlier, but you are not here for the master plan review. So I wasn't aware that anybody was going to be on the agenda this evening. Okay, and you folks, can you tell me why the three of you are here? Not that we don't like you here. Why don't you come up to the microphone?
You don't have to. It's a, no big deal.
I'll just, if I might, these are, these have become invited guests. They were at the township earlier today and had communication with staff and they were letting it be known that we were having this meeting tonight. Their question was about the master plan and so they were informed that we're having a meeting and they thought it was a good idea to come and take a look at exactly how and what we're going to do this evening.
Well, I think I can speak for the planning commissioners. We're glad you're here again, I know I mentioned it earlier. Okay, so there's actually no public comment now. Any other correspondence that we should be aware of?
Not related to the presentation from Beckett and Rader, no.
Okay.
So if, if we're done with questions?
Yeah, thank, thank you very much.
Goodbye to the good folks at Beckett and Rader. And Liz, thank you so much, nice job, and we'll follow up.
Great, yes, thanks for, thanks for your time and.
Thank you.
Great evening.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
So I do have a couple of follow-up items related to the master plan, one of which is that colorful future land use map that you have in front of you. What was discovered, I got a question from Commissioner Coulter about some of the, what appeared to be missing language in the, in the plan, and that's simply because the way that the, the future land use map and the explanations of the intent of those, these sections, a handful of them, the map is of course in a, in a landscape format, but it was placed on a, on a eight and a half by 11 portrait format. And so it got really squished and it got really small. And so it was kind of difficult, not only to read, but even to locate the intent language that was off on the side. And that's in the, it's in the plan, I don't remember which page, but.
Page 96 in the printed version.
There you go, page 96 that you all have. And so the point is, that was just kind of difficult to review. And so I thought it would be a good idea to bring that. And then, this map serves two purposes tonight. The other one was whether or not we gave, not even gave consideration, but included the changes that the commission recommended in regards to the future land use from inquiries and requests by folks on these properties or representatives of these properties. And so, the map also contains six circles, and if you don't mind, we'll just start up at the top right, and the area in there, that's a moderate density designation on the future land use, that's proposed to be changed to that, to the moderate density. So are all the other circles that have that same legend color in that? These are areas that had different land use designations initially, but through the review and analysis of the plan and review by a consultant, those areas have been recommended to be changed and the map has been changed to reflect that. And the other thing that's more outstanding is that you have to look at it pretty the way it's the area circled with a red and yellow, very distinctive, it's affecting the, the extension and the, the consideration makes sense to change that to the commercial designation, different reason, trying to be effective, and the support, the commercial design, we took the need to take the initiative, the mission on the, it's been incorporated into the future land use plan, so that change is trying to be included in that. Again, page 96.
Please. Mr. Bandersky?
Those were areas recommended, but have they come before us, the commission, and been approved?
No. Well, I don't know what you mean by no yet, but what we did do was, we, we've had them incorporated, we've raised the point before about these being incorporated into the plan and then the future land use plan. They, they don't have to stay, they've been part of our dialogue for a period of time. And if I've missed some way of communicating that, then please, we can, we can visit that in.
That's why I raised the question, because I remember submitting my recommendations for the six areas, but this is the first time I getting any feedback on those six items and then find them in the future plan map and, you know, that's why I ask, have they been approved by the commission?
Can I follow up on Mr. Bandersky's comment? Because, I mean, I recall back in July, you sent out a request for us to look at all these proposals and send comments to you, which some of us did, I know I didn't, Mr. Bandersky did. But that was it. It never then came back to the commission to look at these proposals and, you know, the comments and discuss whether we wanted to incorporate some or all, or maybe none of those proposals in our future land use map. So I would suggest that maybe at a future meeting, we put that on as an agenda item to go through those specifics.
Well, Chairman Brown, I'm busy talking, just kind of follow on to these two, because I submitted, I dove by all these places and submitted a recommendation. And one of them that I specifically remember not agreeing with is that one that's on the far right-hand side, second one from the bottom, that one runs along the back of the Warwick Woods subdivision there. I specifically remember in one of our meetings and following up, that not, not agreeing that that was a good thing to do in that area. So I don't know that maybe all of our comments were maybe adequately reflected before this map was published.
I think I'm just going to have to fall on the sword here on this, you guys. I'll put it this way, I think the best way I can describe this would be to say that, you know, from the feedback that we got and the analysis from the consultant, what we did was we incorporated those changes into what is still a draft plan. And so you're right that we didn't bring this specific issue back to you and, and I apologize for that. My thinking was maybe not quite as direct, my, my response wasn't quite as direct as you're letting me know you would have preferred. And so, the way that this was conveyed back was simply by incorporating it into the draft plan. This is a draft master plan land use map. And so, that was my thinking, is that we would have these opportunities, and you're right, we didn't specifically drill back down to this. So I am happy to put together, you know, an opportunity for us to do just that. That won't be impossible or difficult to do, I can, I can manage to put that together. That's on me. I, I'm looking at it like I look at the entire plan and I, and I would expect that if there are other issues or items in the plan, as you've gotten it, that you would comment on those, you would identify things that you might have issues with, which sort of what I have sort of expected for, you know, the time that you've had to plan. So again, I, I could have been a little more direct.
Well, like Al, there is one area that I did not recommend. And, you know, if it came across five to one or six to one or whatever by a commission, then I'm okay with that. But we haven't had a chance to discuss that one, so that's what prompted my questions.
Sure, I appreciate that. That was simply an oversight, not for any reason other than I, I was thinking one way and hoping that you guys would kind of read my mind, I guess, and so that's on me.
Any other questions from the planning commissioners?
As a follow-up, we're going to discuss that at a future meeting.
Yes. I have that here, that we will. And we may be able to do that, we need to do that through Zoom or something in order to do it, you know, soon. And sometimes Zoom or other ways like that are sometimes a little more effective because we can put all the maps right on the screen that everybody's looking at. So give me an opportunity to take a look at that. I'll work with Mr. Laddie here to make sure that we, we put it in the right timing, if you will, and advertise and do any meetings on that in the right manner. We'll get all that taken care of.
My suggestion would be that we call a special meeting, because it's, on Zoom, it's a little more difficult, especially if we have, you know, cross-talk on something that some members support, some members don't. So it's better to do that in person.
Yep, I've got a note about a special meeting right here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else under, you know, the current business that we've been discussing?
Just a couple of things, and sort of getting back to the, to the implementation plan, I think I probably identified that idea pretty well and thanks to Mr. Bandersky about his idea of making sure that the commission looks at that. Yeah, I, I guess in some ways, I'm rethinking some of what maybe I've, the, what I've done there, but I, I guess I did sort of expect that when you got the draft for planning commission review, that that's what you were doing, was reviewing it, the planning commission review. And so my expectations were that, that that was done and that the implementation plan was all looked at, that you guys actually did take a look at the plan in accordance with the memo and the, and the direction there. But we'll make sure that we revisit the other part. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, like I said, the implementation plan and the priorities associated with it. So thank you, Mr. Mansour, for catching that anyway. I think that's, you know, I appreciate your thinking and recognizing the importance of, of making sure that we're not, you know, jumping in and trying to take on, you know, 60 different items when we got the ability to do four. That makes sense. But what I wanted to talk about are a couple of the highlights and, and I'll say it this way, that, you know, clearly the north end of town has been highlighted and recommended and discussed by the community and it's been of great interest. And the things that are in the plan that, that will help to implement, you know, addressing issues in the north end of town are, you know, creating, you know, additional development standards for up there, identifying and implementing incentives to help folks develop up there, to give them a reason to want to redevelop either their property or some of the vacant, underutilized property that we have. And of course, code enforcement. Code enforcement was identified in the plan as a, as a critical factor in us being able to successfully address that issue. And, you know, in some ways, you know, the township as a whole, as a board, if you will, it's going to be a policy issue, it's going to need to determine that, you know, yes, we are willing and, and we want to make sure we're able to go after, if you will, identify and address code enforcement problems and try to rectify them. And there's a number of ways to go after that, you can incentivize that, not just with penalties, but also provide opportunities for improvements to properties that not only address code enforcement issues, but also improve property. So there's a couple of good ways that we can go there. And then the other thing that I think is high, and of course, the other end of town, the DDA area is up there as well, I don't want to get into everything. But the other thing that I did want to get into was the whole non-motorized transportation area. Now, that's big in our ordinance, or excuse me, in our plan. It's a big issue and there's a number of areas, particularly at the end of the implementation plan where the non-motorized is really talked about. But elsewhere in there, it's talked about as well, requirements for sidewalks. So we would need to put language in our zoning ordinance to require that. We can't simply have it as a policy without it becoming an actual ordinance. So if we're going to make people do it, make them do it, we can recommend it all day, like I do every time somebody comes into a meeting, but if they don't want to do it, we don't have any real leverage today to do it. What we need is, is, is an ordinance that requires it under whatever the circumstances are. So there's some work we'll need to do there. And it's, and it's a little different with trails, those are more of an option thing, of course, but those are on us, you know. But what we've got is a good plan that identifies non-motorized transportation and trails in particular, the Ironville Trail, the County Plan, all of that. And so, having the master plan supportive of enhanced trail systems in our community, especially the way that it is, is really going to go a long ways in helping the Parks and Recreation Department when they adopt and update their Parks and Rep Plan, as well as when the township wants to move forward and look for grants, whatever else the case may be, through the feds or the state or the county, to help get some of this construction done. So, you know, we may need to come up with ideas like, you know, either someone builds a sidewalk on their property or they, they, you know, and I'm not exactly sure, there will have a lot of things to work on and to work out, but there are ways to make that happen. And again, there's ways to incentivize that. So those are the kinds of things that we'll be looking at to try to make sure that those go. And I just wanted to mention the north end of town and the whole idea of non-motorized, because those are two of the areas that stand out, my perspective in the plan. I think, you know, generally, we do a pretty good job in this community of addressing a lot of issues, particularly from a development standpoint. We have good standards in place, we have good developers that come into town, people want to be here. And so we really just need to leverage, you know, the talent in this community and maybe working hand-in-hand with some of the developers out there to incentivize some of these things that we really want to see on fruition in our community. So those are the things that we have further discussion in the commission and then of course, move back on to that and hopefully get some.
I'm going to raise my hand as a commissioner right now, and I couldn't agree with you more, and maybe this could be directed at our three guests from the community. You know, we hold developers to high standards in terms of, you know, what they want to do, and I think that's a big part of the master plan, is we want to have growth, we want to have the right kind of growth. And if we take a look at some of the things that we've done in the most recent past would be Elga Credit Union. Are you three folks even aware of Elga Credit Union? You're shaking your head, so I guess you are. Well, they've really been moving along well, but, you know, we work together with them and I think you're going to be proud and I think, I hope our, our, our planning commissioners will be proud when that's built. But it's going to look really, really good and it was not one of those things where it was just thrown together without a whole lot of thought. And so I'm excited to have that kind of thing and that just comes across as part of the overall master plan. That's all I've got to say. Mr. Banderski.
Chairman, I want to go back to the implementation listening. And before I say this, you know, be careful what you ask for, but nonetheless, a thought might be, and as we go through it individually on the priority ones, are there any that we would like to be kind of the champion on? And we might have that discussion, because, you know, and the, the burden of the work is going to fall on you, and so the priorities that we set, or the implementation plans we set, if there's a champion, if, if all they do is make phone calls to the people that are supposed to be doing it, that might help things, move things along. So I just put that thought out there, and we can have that discussion when we go through the plans.
Good. Mr. Banderski.
Second comment.
You got a second one, go right ahead.
Mr. Lloyd, just thank you for sending out the draft master plan in color.
Yes.
Really, rather than just trying to read it offline.
Oh, right.
It's been very helpful.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. I'll pass that along.
Any other comments from our planners as well, other than who's been talking? Mr. Mansour, you have any, any comments you'd like to make?
No, I've been talking.
Okay. Down here, Mr. Horschach?
Yep.
You're good, okay? And Mr. Johnson? And I, did, Mr. Robertson, did you begin to say something?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm listening intently.
Okay. Well, I can say that we've spent a great deal of time and thought on putting this master plan together, and I, I think it's come together as I expected to see it. There's a little few tweaks go on occasionally, but not so much. All right, next on our agenda is the Zoning Board of Appeals.
No.
Did I miss something?
Yes.
Natural, yes, of course. It's sitting right here in front of me.
All right, sir, thank you. Well, what you have is a memo from me that advises you with what changes we were recommending here. And if you'll recall, at the previous meeting, there was a discussion about, you know, basically just the format that we gave you. And one of the problems with redlining that former version is basically the fact that the previously existing tree protection ordinance, which was in the code of ordinances, is gone completely. This ordinance that's here is intended to replace the existing section 5.14 of the zoning ordinance. And so almost, well, very, there's only a couple of provisions in here, really. They're significant and important, but it would have been kind of hard to, to do that. We could have redlined it, but it would have almost all been redlined. Frankly, there would have been one, maybe two pair, two sentences that would have been left. So what I want to do, and what I did in response to the, to the comment about it's easier and better to read if it's been redlined, is I made, we made changes based on the dialogue we had that evening. And as a result, I went ahead and redlined this version for you, so that you could at least see the changes from what we had talked about the last time. And so what I want to do is just, I'll go with them real quick. Please stop me and ask whatever questions you might have, or wait till they have, either way, it's fine with me. And that, so what you've got is, on the first page, under definitions, number 2C, we changed it from a landmark tree to what's called a native tree, and that's simply because the way the ordinance is written, native tree is referenced in there, and they're native trees that we're talking about. So landmark became a little bit of a question that we had, and I think this clears it up very well. We don't need to have the size of the tree, or a landmark tree for it to be, or a native tree for it to be a native tree, so we got rid of that language. And then, you know, to, um, paragraph, section B, subsection B, we have the same thing, we put the same, in this case, we also need to identify the size, because we don't, there is a, if there are trees, you're going to identify, identify every native tree, if it goes, you know, that are 16 inches or greater, and you know, Mr. Yaito, this is part of the, this culture, and see, we've got the definition changed, the same thing, and I didn't, we stick to what I did in the beginning, just saying, in front of the, the tree, 16 inches or greater, just pay attention, the same thing, or is it, is it, is it, is it, 16 inches or greater, so we can, 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 we[1207.82]